To order. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
House member Shippers? I'm here in Cadillac. Allen Bass?
Present in Cadillac.
Ingalls?
Here in Cadillac.
King?
Here in Cadillac.
Mayor Falcons?
Here in Cadillac. And at this time, if we could have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
I'd make a motion to approve the... Oh, wait a minute. I'm in the wrong line. I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Allen Bass?
Shippers supports. House member Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for a public comment. You ask if you want to speak in a public comment that you let us know your name?
I don't see anybody raising their hand.
Okay, so not seeing anyone, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening, we do have in the consent agenda the minutes from our work session that we had on April 5th, along with the minutes from our regular meeting on April 5th.
Councilmember Shippers, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
This is Ingalls, I'll support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, this evening, we do have a proclamation. The proclamation is for Arbor Day, which we are going to be celebrating this week. So whereas the legislature of this state has adopted an act designating Arbor Day, and whereas it is the purpose of the designation of this day throughout the nation to encourage the planting of shade and forest trees, to encourage the harvesting of our forest crops by approved conservation methods, and to encourage the protection of our forests from the scourge of devastating fires, insects, and diseases that destroy the beauty and usefulness of our woodlands, as well as their wildlife. And whereas through the cooperation of all citizens of this city, the beneficial effects of forestry planting, proper conservation practices in harvesting timber, and the protection from the natural enemies of the forest can be materially increased, and we can pass on an enduring heritage of vital natural resources to succeeding generations. And therefore, I, Carla J. Falcons, mayor of the City of Cadillac, Michigan, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 30th, 2021, as Arbor Day, and urge everyone able to do so to observe this day by the planting of one or more trees and by participating in one or more programs that sponsors Arbor Day, that the sponsors of Arbor Day may provide, given under my hand and the seal of the City of Cadillac this 19th day of April in the year of 2021. Okay, so we have two public hearings tonight. Marcus, would you like to go ahead and introduce the first one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This evening, our first public hearing is with regard to our fiscal year 2022 through 2027 capital improvement program. And I would like to turn the floor over to our finance director, Owen Roberts, who will provide a recap of the presentation city council heard a couple of weeks ago. Accordingly, Owen?
Okay, thank you very much. I just want to make sure the slides are going here. Everybody can see the presentation?
Yes, I can.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, there we go. Okay. So, thanks, Marcus. Tonight, we're here to have a public hearing regarding the 2022 through 2027 capital improvement program. And just to highlight, and I think it's important again to remind and refresh us of, and distinguish really between this public hearing and the one that we'll have right after this. This one, we will ask council to take a motion, to consider a motion to approve the program. And so the purpose of this one, really, this is a planning document. And so this planning document helps us with project coordination. It's an opportunity for us to do what we're doing here tonight, to do what we did on March 24th, to reach out and gather some public input and communication. Is this a required document? No, the capital improvement planning process is not required by any charter or ordinance or anything of the city. But it is a very important part, I think, of our annual planning cycle. And so again, council will be asked to consider a motion to approve this program. That does not authorize any projects, nor does it appropriate funds for any project. It simply approves the the planning document. And then that planning document then helps to inform and to guide our budgeting process that we we kind of do simultaneously. So this program is updated annually as an early stage of the budget process. How do we define a capital project? Again, asset or a project that costs in excess of $7,500, which is the council's purchasing threshold, and it has a useful life of more than one year. So you typically won't find things like studies in here, but you will find things like software, and then the standard things that you would expect. How are these projects identified? We take departmental requests and analyze needs of each individual department. We take a look at and solicit input on city council priorities. That's part of what we did on the 24th. We're always looking at community needs and analyzing and considering citizen input that we've received throughout the year as that can feed into this document then. And then we look at any grants that might be available or that we might be seeking in order to get those in here and then to start to identify any required matching funds. So the current iteration, the current version of the program identifies 142 total projects with a total cost of just over $17 million. And it covers, again, a six-year period. It used to be five, which was a nice round number. But for some reason, our redevelopment-ready community certification required a sixth year. So what the magic of the sixth year was, I'm not sure. But instead of being a five-year CIP, now it's now it's become a six-year CIP. So you can see how those projects are split. Really, the bulk of the number of projects is in technology and vehicles and equipment, things that we use every single day. The biggest dollar amount, obviously, streets and utilities, infrastructure, kind of as you would expect. So 142 projects with a total cost of just over $17 million. One of the main things that we like to get out there as far as projects that garner the most interest are our street projects. Year one, right now, in the major street fund, will include the roundabout. We talked a little bit about that. About three quarters of that project will be from grant funds and then a little participation with the Wexford County Road Commission. And then we plan to do a portion of West Division Street from Leeson to Boone on the local street side. And again, you can see the cost of these projects has gone up pretty dramatically from just several years ago. Lester Street from Cobb's up to Howard, which is a pretty substantial length of street that runs by Lincoln School and the hospital, is 675,000. And portions of Air Street, Simon Street. And then there are more on the schedule depending on funding. Just because of the cost, there's about $1.5 million then that's made its way into the into the budget. So then years two through six, there are about 17 additional projects for just over $4 million. Utilities, infrastructure, this is similar to streets in that several of the projects, 12 out of 21 utilities, infrastructure projects that are included in the document are related to the street construction projects. And again, this is the project coordination that we work. We work really hard at so that we don't have to tear up a new street to replace old utilities, infrastructure. So we're doing the water and sewer mains along those same street projects and the manholes, as well as to be replaced as the streets are torn up. One of the things that we have in here in the later years of the document is to try and plan for some sewer lining projects. So this is a cheaper way to do more work for the sewer main lines that are still in good enough condition that a lining process will extend the life long enough where it becomes... It makes a lot of sense to do it from a cost perspective. Certain lines wouldn't be able to do this, but there is a number of lines that you can do. And we can get a lot for that $500,000 cost. Again, trying to plan for the, so that we have the cash to do some of those things. And just very briefly, just to highlight some of the other projects that flow into this document. Heavy equipment, we use a lot of that. Couple of small one-ton dump trucks. These are primarily using the DPW for things like chipping trees and brush into. Two of those, there's two in the fleet. Both of them are very old and need to be replaced. The next one, the aerial truck. This is something that we're still in discussion about. We've got this in there for year three. It would cost about $450,000 just to do a complete overhaul on the truck. It's already 25 years old. Replacement of these things could be up to $1.75 million or more. And so the refurb could extend that life up to 10 years. So, you know, that's about $45,000 per year as a cost. And if you take that 1.75 million by 30, you know, that's a little bit more than $45,000 a year. So it may make sense as we as we look into the future to try and do something like this. We're also looking at the availability of grant dollars. So we're going to continue to look for those that may help us replace this equipment. Obviously, a one, one piece of equipment that costs almost $2 million is something that we can't just do on an emergency basis. So trying to make a common sense, a good sense plan to make sure that we have a good, safe operating aerial truck for the fire department. Backhoe, again, year three, the thing will be over 20 years old at this point. And so this is something that's used. If there's a water main break or something, these things respond to that. So it's important to have have good equipment. And then another fire truck to replace the other engine. We just obviously replaced one. There's another one in the fleet that will be ready to be replaced at that point. Again, lastly, some other project highlights here. Police patrol vehicles, four of them in this six-year plan. Just to let you know, the last mainline patrol car that we replaced was in 2019. At that time, our average fleet mileage was about 41,000 miles. We didn't replace one last year as part of another plan. The average mileage went up to about 68,000. And then this year, now we've ordered two, but at this point, the average miles is about 86,000 on these things. So, you know, you skip a year or two and you, though that was in our plan, you can see that the mileage really adds up on these things really quickly. So want to avoid downtime, want these guys to be able to respond when they need to respond. Playground equipment. We talked about this a little bit at the work session as well. Our playgrounds are getting older, and we want to make sure that they're they're safe. So we'll do a number of inspections this spring and identify areas where we may be able to, or where we may need to invest some funds in doing that. So 25,000 of that is in year one, and so that's in the proposed budget. And so that would be something that we could do this summer yet. IT replacement, we budget about $20,000 a year. We have 60 to 65 workstations or PCs, a number of servers, and a bunch of other network infrastructure that we need to keep refreshed and so that it works effectively, so that it's safe, so we have the appropriate security in place. We try to replace computers on a five-year schedule, and that enables us to do that. That's that's my comments on the CIP tonight. Again, just a reminder, this is not required. We are requesting approval, which again approves the program as a plan, does not appropriate any funds at this point, just approves the plan. So are there any questions that I can answer?
You're on mute still?
There you go.
I think at this point, perhaps opening it up to the public might be our next step.
Actually, I just did that, but I was on mute, so I apologize. So at this time, we'll open the floor for public comment.
Not seeing any.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close public comment and move to any discussion by the council or a motion.
This is councilmember Shippers. If there's no other comments, I would like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022 through 2027 capital improvement program as presented.
This is Ingalls, I'll support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries. All right, and so then we'll move right into the second public hearing?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next public hearing is with respect to our fiscal year 22 annual operating budget. Again, city council did have a full debrief at your last special work session. This evening, Owen Roberts has the highlights and another presentation to share prior to opening the floor up to the public. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. So this is the public hearing now for the annual budget for the fiscal year that begins July 1, 2021, in just a couple of months from now, and ends June 30, 2022. For simplicity's sake, I'm just going to refer to it as 2022 throughout this presentation. So if you hear me say that, you know that I'm referring to the actual fiscal year. I think it's important again to point out each year as a reminder to council and to the public that this this hearing now does satisfy a very specific requirement of the city charter. The city charter guides the budget process, requiring the steps that are on this screen right now. So it requires the budget to be delivered to the city council for review on or before the first day of April in each year. And again, these are from Section 10 of the city charter. Requires a budget hearing in the second half of the month of April. And so that's what we're doing here tonight is complying with Section 10.3 of the charter to have this hearing. And then it requires budget adoption, not before the 10th day of May, nor later than the last day in May each year. So that traditionally and typically happens at the second May council meeting on the the third Monday in May. So this year, that would be on May 17th. And per then Section 5.6, subsection B5, appropriating funds and requires the affirmative vote of four or more members of the council. So to adopt a budget requires the the super majority that some, that certain actions take. Budget amendments, then, just to emphasize that this is kind of a living, breathing document once it's adopted. The budget ordinance, as passed, grants authority to amend the budget when necessary by resolution of the city council. Overall, the 20, the proposed 2022 budget anticipates revenues of $20,289,300, and it appropriates just over $23 million in spending. Now, this is a planned and expected use of prior fund balances on hand related to the issuance of the $4 million in capital improvement bonds that were issued in August of 2020. Proceeds from those bonds were recognized as revenue in the current fiscal year, which is 2021. But they must be spent down within three years. That includes the current year. Some of those funds are being spent this proposed budget and possibly even one more budget cycle that we have in order to use those funds. And that's the specific use that accounts for nearly all of the use of fund balance being proposed in the 2022 budget. The 2022 budget includes ongoing investments in several important priority areas. First, the budget preserves fund balance, especially in the city's primary operating fund, the general fund. So these reserves provide cash flow stability for uncertain times, keep funds available for special projects, and then grant matching funds as well. And it keeps the city well positioned to address any emergencies that arise. In fact, unassigned fund balance has now increased over the last several years, surprisingly, is now is at 35% of total expenditures. So two to three years is kind of the, or two to three months operating funds on hand in the reserve, which is, you know, 17 to 25% is kind of the best practice recommendation from the Government Finance Officers Association. So we do have somewhat in excess of that at 35%. So we're in a good place, and this budget protects those reserves. The budget also makes important priority investments in infrastructure, $2.5 million plus, plus what goes underground as far as utilities. It makes some recreation and amenity investments, nearly half a million dollars, and in the team of city employees with Colas provided for in the proposed budget as well. The full-time roster of employees was reduced by one this year, as we talked about at the work session. This was accomplished through attrition in order to position the water and sewer fund to address cost increases from the well field project. An administrative position was transferred to fill an opening in another department. And it is hopeful and kind of the expectation that this will be a short-term fix as we watch what usage does here over the last, the next, the next months and even into the next fiscal year. The primary revenue that is generated locally is the property taxes. Citywide taxable value peaked in 2009 and then experienced nearly a decade of declines with just a couple of very minimal increases mixed in. And this this chart presents that, I think, in a pretty easy-to-see fashion. So the last several years, as we followed the real estate market, and there's been definitely a pickup in that last several years, has seen a rebound then in total taxable value, which has helped stabilize property tax revenues. And these revenues then provide about 56% of total general fund revenues. With any good news, it seems like there's always kind of the big butt, so to speak. And there is one here, and that that's called the Headley Amendment. So the operating millage that will be levied for 2022 is going to have to be reduced once again to 13.663 mils. So this this millage rate has been reduced in three of the last four years, which is unprecedented for Cadillac due to restrictions of the Headley Amendment. For us, for the current year, that will reduce our current operating levy by $29,000. So again, we have growth, which is good news. Not quite as much growth as we could have otherwise had without the amendment, which is, you know, good news for, it's accomplishing what it set out to accomplish, and that's so taxes don't go up too quickly. Our DDA millage that's levied just on the downtown properties is also going to have to be rolled back, and that will be from 1.9387 mils to 1.9173 mils. Not a huge financial impact on that just because of the size of the of the taxable value in the district. Again, here's the... Sorry about that. As we then apply the millage rate to our taxable value, our taxable value is just over 253 million. So a quarter of a billion dollars, I guess, if we want to say it that way. That generates about $4.1 million in property taxes between the city's primary villages, the operating millage and the police and fire retirement millage. There are three authorities, tax increment finance authorities in the city that capture a portion of these taxes, and that totals about $125,000 of city taxes combined with the operating and the retirement funds that go to these authorities then to do the work contained in their in their tax increment financing plans. So the general fund is the primary operating fund of the city. Basically, it accounts for all the funds that flow through the city that aren't required to be accounted for in any other fashion. So it's kind of a catch-all for anything that we're not required to account for in a different way. So the 2022 budget plans for total general fund revenues of $7,333,100. Property taxes at just over $4 million will account for 56% of this revenue. The other principal sources are state shared revenue, which is estimated at $1,110,000. And these projections, again, are based on the most recent data available from the state of Michigan, which is from February. And there are some anecdotal stories that I've been seeing and reading that seem to indicate that revenues, at least in the last month or so, have exceeded what the state's been projecting. So feel pretty comfortable and confident that that this is an achievable budget revenue number. Solid waste fees. These are subject to some inflationary adjustments each year in the contracts. And so when when those are applied to the rates, it is expected that that the total solid waste rate is going to increase about 41 cents per month, which equates to just under five bucks per year. Again, these are directly passed on to the to the haulers, both the solid waste with Republic Services for trash and Miss Green for recycling. There's no additional revenue that the city gets from these. These are just inflationary adjustments built in to the contracts. Lastly, several ongoing contracts provide revenue specifically for the provision of public safety services. So this budget plans for the continuation of contracts for medical response, which is now with MMR, the partnership with Cadillac Area Public Schools for the school resource officer at $50,000. And then the provision of fire protection services for Clam Lake Township. And as you recall, this contract was just extended in December for another four years. So that that's good news as well. Related to expenditures in the in the general fund, the 2022 budget does plan for a small surplus for the year, that just $7,200. The budget does maintain the same level of staffing for the general fund and is primarily a service organization. We are about two-thirds of our budget related to the cost of personnel. The budget provides for capital spending in the amount of $131,500. Couple of vehicles, some of police equipment, and then some investment in the parks, as we talked about. And then there is built into this year's budget transfer of $30,000 to the lake treatment fund to offset the costs of this year's treatment and the lake treatment consultant. The other major fund of the city is the Water and Sewer Fund, which is an enterprise fund that is blended for both water and sewer. And it is used to ensure that the water and sewer user charges adequately cover the costs of providing the services. I want to always, I think this this study is something that we've leveraged in the past just to demonstrate that we, our rates really do compare favorably in our region when we look at other systems. The survey of communities is from the northern lower and eastern upper peninsulas. So as you see here, Cadillac was the sixth lowest of 47 respondents from the municipal water supply side. And then on the sewer side, we're the 11th lowest out of 48 respondents for sewer services. You see the typical bills presented on the chart. Typical water and sewer combined bill. Typical water and sewer combined bill from the survey is seventy-three dollars and seventy-five cents a month. While Cadillac's combined typical water and sewer bill. Is just forty-four dollars and seventy-two cents, about thirty-nine percent below the typical bill. From the survey. And again, that's from the northern lower peninsula, eastern upper peninsula. I think that's good context when we start talking about our local fees. This chart presents about fifteen years worth of. Of what has happened to the the rates here in in Cadillac. I think you can see back in the. Close to two thousand ten, leaning up to that shortly after, as we prepared for phase one of the well. Project passing the systematic series of rate increases. Four of the next six years after that, the rates were were held flat, a zero percent increase in four of those six years. And then now, as we near kind of the finish line for. Phase two of the well field project, we need to make sure that we're. Building a rate structure that will will support the debt service and the. The interest as we begin to to repay the debt. The rate changes as recommended were were justified really via the rate. And cash flow analysis provided by two independent firms. The last couple of years, we've used an analysis and an updated analysis from from Baker Tilly. They did consulting work related to our water asset management plan. And then Baird served as our financial advisor for the recent bond issuance for the loan for the. Through the DWRF program. And both of them presented a very similar case. For rates. So based on this information, rate increases of of five percent for the current year are being proposed. Factoring in these recommendations, looking at the last fifteen years, average adjustments. Calculate to being three point four percent for water. And less than three percent, two point seven percent on the sewer side. The revenue projections for the Water and Sewer Fund are up six percent from the current usage trends that we are seeing now. Again, this is, this is as compared. The budgeted revenue compared to what we currently project as we look at. What is going on currently. The current fiscal year continues to feel some of the effects. Early on in the year from the pandemic shutdowns. We feel that we've we've gotten past that at this point and and the. The trends are are looking to are looking positive and that the the usage has recovered. To a point where we're comfortable with this as a budget. This fund as well is projected to have a small surplus for 2022. On the expense side, budgeted expenses are up six and a half percent. This primarily due. To increased costs as a result of the new well field. Reduction of staff. By one, just to try and provide relief. And lessen some of the stress on the on the rates as simply the sole mechanism. To to balance the budget. So in addition to the budget expenses. And the well field project, the fund will make proposed capital investments of just over. One million dollars on infrastructure and equipment. Getting close to the end here, I promise. I think this is the kind of the last detailed slide. So. The proposed budget includes these construction projects, as we just talked about, even again in the in the CIP. Of note, I think again, the roundabout. Expected that we'll we'll get about three quarters of that funded through a safety enhancement grant. And through the Wexford County Road Commission with a small contribution as well. Also wanted to point out that as part of just kind of the operations and and street maintenance budget. We are going to try and and resurface a portion of North Boulevard out by Kenwood. And again, this is as a Band-Aid. So this is not a permanent. Fix at this point. The the city is eligible for grant dollars, similar to what we're using for Chestnut Street. But that is only on a cycle. Those grant funds are available every other year. And we share them with the Wexford, the. The CWTA, the transit. And with the road commission. So we have them. Now, and then it's the road commission, then the transit, and then we get it again. In the third cycle every other year. So six years from now. We would plan to use grant funds to to do this project. But we do want to take a look at certain portions of North Boulevard that we can. We can resurface as part of the current budget. So you can see the streets and and the construction projects that we we propose. Also wanted to point out that part of our ongoing operational budget includes. Costs to to paint the major roads, including the bike lanes. I know that's been a topic of. Of conversation as well. In fact, there is a bid out on the street right now. That council will consider for award at the May third. Meeting and that painting then will happen. Hopefully throughout May then, and then the city will also be out painting. Some bike stencils and then we move towards some some intersection. And crosswalks and things like that. So wanted to let you know also that that's a part of the operating budget. In the major and local street fund. That really concludes the the detailed review of the budget. Just wanted to highlight again. That this is a very public process that we try to follow each year to adopt the budget. Typically, overall, there are a minimum of five public meetings each budget. Cycle that provide the opportunity for members of the public to give input and for us to have a a public discussion. On the budget and the capital plan. The budget also is available. On the city's website, beginning the first Monday of April. And then throughout the budget cycle and then the final budget is posted once it's it's adopted. So we try and make this as accessible as possible, including being available for. Questions and comments and and there is my contact information right there. If you wanted to pass it along to anyone. At any time that would like to discuss. All or portions of the budget, we'd be happy to do that anytime. Council, again, as the next step, will introduce the budget ordinance on May three. There's no action to take tonight. This is simply the the public hearing. On May third, we'll introduce that ordinance and consider it for adoption on May seventeenth. Where we can incorporate changes, adjustments throughout that time. And if it's not in time to get them in by then, again, as we talked about, we can amend the budget at any time. So. Happy to turn it back over to the mayor at this point.
Okay, thank you, Owen. At this time, we'll open the floor for any public comment. As it relates to this public hearing. On the annual operating budget.
I'm not seeing anybody, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Is that for us, Mayor? Do I get to ask questions?
As soon as I close public comment. Then it's time for council discussion. So I will go ahead and close public comment and open it up for council.
My screen went blank. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Owen, I got a couple of questions, of course, your favorite council personnel and boss. Do you ever think? The sewer water rates, we're going to have a budget where you're not going to raise it? Is this the fourth or fifth year in a row we're raising?
Yeah, so I mean, good question. That that's a difficult question to answer. You know, I guess the this chart kind of speaks for itself, Brian. I think it's a it paints a good picture. Of of, you know, there were some. Rates in excess of the average back in two thousand ten, eleven and twelve. As we prepared for the the phase one of the well field. As part of that project, there was a green component where we actually got some principal forgiveness. And so the loan on that was quite a bit less. This. I'll I'll circle back and I'll I promise I'll answer your question, but just want to provide a little bit of context. I think in this chart, I think really does it. So. After that, then, when we got that principal forgiveness, the debt was less. By about a million dollars than what we had actually anticipated. And so the the decision was made in four of the next six years to to hold the rates. Flat at a zero percent. So. You know, after that, then we started to need to build towards phase two. Phase two became a bigger project, much, much bigger. Than phase one, which was about three million dollars. This one is, you know, close to nine point seven. As we completely relocate. The the whole operation and abandon the whole well field that that exists now. So. You know, probably up for debate, Brian, would be. Was it the right decision in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, fifteen and eighteen to go zero? Or if you'd have if you'd have maintained kind of that systematic. Rate process. In order to to have some some margin each year. To to make those capital investments and to set some money aside. Could what we're doing now have been softened somewhat? So so the answer is kind of yes and no. You know, there there are years where it makes sense to do zero. Sometimes down the road, you can reevaluate and say, was that the smartest thing to do? At the time, so.
Well, during a pandemic when finances are tough. Rating rates every year, it's it's you know, I have a great deal of respect for you and I really like the job you do, but. People are getting a little tired of this. Let me let me switch here. This is my second question.
Okay.
The roundabout.
Yep.
What did doesn't the state usually do studies or tests to see? Traffic wise, if it's necessary for a roundabout in that area and were those done?
I am noticing that. Connie is on the phone and not to put you on the spot, Connie. Could you stick around? Are you available to? To make any comments on that by chance?
Yeah. Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Hi, that's a good question. So the way the safety grants work is they evaluate it based on, you know, unfortunately. Just let me back up a little bit. Some of the safety grants are awarded because they've already had fatalities at them. So given the amount of time that people wait at the intersection. And the. The risk that people take when turning out of there. After waiting so long. This project was evaluated, the safety unit at MDOT. Did decide to award it a grant.
Okay. That answers that. Thank you. One one last question, one last question, Owen, and I'll be, you'll be done with me. I'll be out of your hair. The you said the street lane painting is now being bid out. You mean the markers down the middle of the street that we haven't had done in four years is going to get done?
Yes, sir. It is going to get done. Yep.
But but I I guess the thing I I can't agree with there that I'm a little surprised about is now being bid out. That's something that used to be done. By two, two men on nights for one month in the summer.
Yep, we we do the we do the intersection still and we'll still be doing that. This is painting the straight lines. And the passing lines.
And that's what the guys have done on. At least for the thirteen years I was there, it was done in-house.
No, not not the sideline striping and the center line marking. We've we've. We have a bid from the last time several years ago. I think seventeen was the last time we bid this out and awarded it. But doing the the crosswalk, those are stencils. And so we have those stencils to do the turn arrows, the big blocks that that show you. Where to stop. Some of the crosswalks, we do all of those and there's two guys that work nights and do it in the night.
Is our spray painters, that antique still operational? Is that being used?
Ours does, yes. So we do some parking lots like at the. In the in the parks and and some simple work with with that. It it is okay for some small jobs. And then it does paint in the stencils.
Okay.
Pretty well for the arrows and things.
But I I seem like to remember at least in my work there from oh, three to sixteen. That the entire city was painted. With that old unit with two guys on nights.
Yeah, not walking, not walking, you know, twenty miles of major road and doing the lines on the side and painting the lanes and the dashes. That's not, that's not work that we've done. We still do the. The arrows and things, though.
You answered my questions. Good as usual, big guy. Thank you.
Do we have the, when we raise the sewer rates every year, it seems like we always try to highlight that Baker Tilly. Don't they usually include like a ten year estimate? I remember last time I looked at it, we were running like. Threes for the next ten years or five percent increases for the next ten years. I don't exactly remember what it was. But I do know that. Isn't that part of their document?
It is. So. Once we get through. Really this year and a little bit higher than normal next year is on that Baker Tilly study. Then it normalizes back to a, you know, a more inflationary type. Rate adjustment. So it's just over two percent in the Baird study. It's a flat three percent in the Baker Tilly study. So it does normalize once we kind of absorb the effects of the new project.
Okay. And you know, just to the roundabout, you know, I've since I've been on the council in two thousand seventeen. And being in the third ward and living on Cass Street, I know that numerous residents have asked how to slow down traffic. We've got the radar feedback signs a couple of years ago. And that seems to to help a little bit. I can't speak for everybody, but I, you know, that that roundabout, I hope. People have been driving on the interstate for a long time. I that'll, you know, that'll slow them down from having that lead foot as they continue on down the hill into the city. So. I know. People are upset about the roundabouts and the changes in the roads, but. Like where I live, it's a neighborhood where on Cass Street, kids. Still play in the front yard and. That roundabout will be welcomed, I think, for a lot of those, a lot of us down here. So.
Okay, if there's no more discussion, would someone like to, oh, actually, we don't have to do anything on that this evening.
No action required.
Yeah. No action required. So that then will take us to the manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of city council. And Owen, just a quick reminder about the screen share. Before we get too far. There you go. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of city council. Appreciate the presentations this evening. Owen and and members of council, I appreciate your your time and patience as always as well. Regarding tonight's managers' report, one item, and it's just simply the COVID nineteen update. Just another reminder for folks to visit the triple W dot D H D dot ten, excuse me, D H D ten dot org. Website. And a reminder that everybody sixteen years of age or older, if they're interested. Is now eligible to register to get a vaccine. You'll also see that the latest. Snapshot of the of the pandemic in our ten county area is available for folks to look at. And just quickly today in Wexford County. Today, there's been thirty-five, as of today, there's been thirty-five new cases. Bringing the total up to two thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight. There are nearly two hundred and sixty additional probables. A total of thirty deaths within Wexford County. And currently, a total number of fif- fifteen eighty-nine folks that have recovered. And so, you know, we're still, we're still spiking. As as we're all trudging, trudging through this together. But that that concludes the manager's report, short and sweet this evening.
Okay, thank you, Marcus.
Thank you.
So there are a couple of ordinances that we need to introduce.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. Sort of right, you know, right after mentioning the COVID nineteen update. The first item this evening is a resolution that introduces an ordinance. Declaring a local state of emergency due to COVID, COVID nineteen pandemic. I'm going to let Mike Homier provide a deeper explanation, but in in short. City council may recall. On an emergency basis, we instituted. A sixty day timeframe. In which meetings can remain to be be held virtual. As it correlates to the current Open Meetings Act legislation that our the state of Michigan has before us. Because there is no longer a timing emergency adopting. The local state of emergency, and I apologize for using that word so often in my sentences. But adopting that local state of emergency. Through sort of normal course of action. By setting up a public hearing and whatnot is what we're looking at doing this evening. We're also looking at doing it. Through the end of or having it be in effect through the end of the calendar year. And as I think Mike will mention. By no means does this mean that. You cannot meet in person. Until the end of the calendar year. You can, you know, pretty much meet in person anytime. As long as we're in compliance with my OSHA and MDHHS. as long as we're in compliance with my OSHA and MDHHS regulations. And so let's say that next week, things completely or next month, things completely open up. We can be, you know, sort of back to normal again accordingly. Mike, if you want to maybe clarify a little bit, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, so under the current Open Meetings Act, there are only three reasons that members may attend virtually public meetings. One is for a local state of emergency, the other is for a medical condition. And if you're a military member who is deployed, so those reasons for virtual meetings narrow after the end of the year. So beginning January first of two thousand twenty two, the only reason you can have virtual meetings is or attend virtual meetings is if you're a member of the military and you cannot attend in person. We thought it was important to to get this ordinance in front of the City Council because we don't know because of the recent surge in cases when you can or should return to in person meetings. And so this is drafted simply to give you the option to continue holding virtual meetings. As City Manager indicated, it does not mean that you cannot meet in person should circumstances change, but gives you the option to continue holding virtual meetings. You know, the City Hall is not well equipped to handle social distancing and also accommodate members of the public at the same time, at least in a sufficient number that would also comply with the Open Meetings Act. And we recently saw that down in Hudsonville recently where they had a school board meeting, they decided to hold it in person. And they had it in the school, high school auditorium. And with social distancing, they were only able to fit seventy six people. Well, more than seventy six people showed up and they physically locked them out of the room, which presents an Open Meetings Act problem for them now. And so you can see, even if you wanted to meet in person, we don't have the ability to gauge at least correctly how many people or how many members of the public might show up. And so you would not be able to have social distancing and still allow a sufficient number of the members of the public in City Hall chambers, even if you were to meet in person. So it's an important option to have. It doesn't necessarily, as I said, indicate that you're going to hold virtual meetings through the end of the year. It just gives you the ability to do so without having to consider an emergency ordinance. Again, your current emergency ordinance, I believe, expires in May. And so this ordinance would become effective upon the expiration of that one and carry you through the end of the year and would allow you to hold virtual meetings if you deem it necessary to continue to do so.
Mike, do you, hold on, are you familiar with what happened in like Wexford County a week or two ago where the commissioners weren't allowed to participate remotely because they hadn't made a declaration to? Can you explain that? Are you familiar with that?
Well, I'm familiar with the Open Meetings Act. And so right now, you know, the at the end of March, the ability to meet virtually for any reason expired under the terms of the Open Meetings Act, which leaves you with three reasons now that are sufficient for holding virtual meetings, one of which is a declaration of a state of emergency. And so I understand that Wexford County is not a county that has declared a local state of emergency. I have a list of counties that have, and there's I want to say something like forty some counties that have declared a local state of emergency. Had Wexford County declared a local state of emergency, the city could have relied on that declaration to continue holding virtual meetings, but because they did not and you would have been otherwise forced to hold in person meetings under the OMA. I think the council recognized the importance of doing that emergency ordinance. So this is really just an extension of that because your, under your charter, a declaration, sorry, an emergency ordinance like you have adopted only lasts for sixty days. That may or may not be sufficient time in which you can get back to in person meetings. This is really just an insurance policy to make sure that if circumstances in the county or in the city exist where it's too risky to put a bunch of people in the same room together that you can continue holding virtual meetings. Had had Wexford County declared a local state of emergency, they could have met remotely.
And and Marcus, is that up? Does the Wexford County Commissioners, do they vote on that? Or can the emergency manager declare that by himself? Do you do you know the answer to that?
So I believe the emergency manager and or the Chair of the Board may have the ability to declare a local state of emergency for the county for a shortened period of time. I don't recall off the top of my head how long that is. But it might be for for a couple of weeks and then it would require the the full board to take action should they wish to extend it for any greater period of time similar to what City Council is being asked to consider insofar as tonight with respect to setting the public hearing. So that Mike, you might have that that data in front of you, but I believe the mayor, independent of the council, could actually set the the local state of emergency here in the city for maybe a couple of weeks.
Seven days.
Okay, all right, seven days. Yeah. So so Councilmember Ingles, you know, to answer your question, you know, they they could they could set it for a week, but then otherwise would need the full board to extend it for any meaningful length of time. And as the city attorney this evening, you know, has has, you know, provided the the foundation or the groundwork, you know, to try to make some basis of understanding with all this, what we're really looking at trying to do is is provide enough, essentially enough cover for the city so that we're in complete compliance with the Open Meetings Act and you know, won't necessarily need to to adjust, adjust it throughout the rest of the calendar year. And then, of course, as as Mike and I have said, that it still provides us with the flexibility of being able to, you know, to meet in person should, you know, should hopefully things change in a dramatic fashion regarding the pandemic and regulations through my ocean and VHS, you know, start to loosen up. You know, we'll be able to to react accordingly. So but just a quick reminder also, all we're looking at doing this evening is is setting the public hearing date accordingly. You know, for this item to then be under further consideration at your next meeting.
Thank you.
So ju- just ju- just to answer, Robert, your question. I don't think that the emergency management coordinator has the authority to declare a state of emergency. That rests with the in in Wexford County's case, I believe that rests with the Chair, Chairperson of the Board.
Okay.
I've got a question for you, Mike. So this reading this ordinance, would this cover other meetings within the city? Of course, like planning commissions and other things like that or that are city sponsored things. But would it also cover other meetings such as like maybe a library board meeting or something like that that normally takes place within the city? Would this allow them to continue to meet electronically?
Yeah, I think that it certainly would cover all of the boards and commission of the city itself. I believe it would also cover the library board in the city as well, to the extent that, you know, the library board itself does not have the authority anyways to to declare a local state of emergency, but could utilize that as a as a reason to hold virtual meetings.
Okay, great. Thanks.
So too, I think somebody asked me the question about whether this would allow members of the county board who are resident in the city to attend virtual meetings. That's a little more complicated. I believe under the OMA and under the local state of emergency or the Emergency Management Act, it would allow those members to attend virtually. So there are two reasons, putting aside the military service issue for a minute. There are two reasons that would allow members of a public body to attend virtually. That is because of the local state of emergency or because of a medical condition that precludes attendance in person. That medical condition does not have to be disclosed, other than to say you have a medical condition that precludes your in person attendance. But beyond that, you don't have to disclose to actually what it is.
Okay, would someone like to entertain a motion?
This is Councilmember Shippers. I will make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance declaring local state of emergency due to COVID nineteen pandemic and set a public hearing for May third, two thousand twenty one.
This is Ingles. I'll support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries.
Sorry, didn't realize I was still muted. So thank you, Mayor and members of the the City Council. This next item, if it appears to be a little familiar, is because you first had it in front of you back in December of two thousand twenty. This is with respect to the transfer of real property within the White Pine area and acceptance of a water utilities easement. As you'll see in the council communication pursuant to the affirmative action taken by City Council back on December seventh of two thousand twenty. We're now being asked this evening to consider the setting of the public hearing that will adopt a resolution that introduces the ordinance that actually transfers the property accordingly to the White Pine Village Development. If you look in the in the online packet, you'll also see for reference the area within the the couple of maps that are there that that I'm referring to. And this, of course, all has correlation with our well field project as well. I don't I don't know if there's any any questions from what we did back in December or not. I'm certainly happy to to entertain them. And I know that our utilities director is is also on the line as well.
Okay, if there's no questions or discussion, would someone like to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance to approve transfer of real property, White Pine area and to accept a water utilities easement and set a public hearing for May seventeenth, two thousand twenty one. Alabas?
This is Ingles. I'll support.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes, motion carries. This time, we'll open the floor for our second public comment this evening.
I am not seeing any hands raised.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and close public comment and move to the good of the order. Anyone has anything?
I just have a small question for Marcus. Is the city donating to the Chamber of Commerce's Shea locomotive roof project? Are we donating to that?
No, we're not, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
We we do have I guess I'll call it in kind donations through the fact that one of our staff members is a part of the the leadership class this year. We will have staff members on the leadership class from time to time. Just coincidental that the the project happens to be a project in the city, but the staff member does have graphic design capabilities and has been helping along the leadership class from time to time with some of their, you know, marketing efforts, but we're not directly donating any any cash at this point.
Okay.
I have a question as it relates to relocating geese. Are they going to have that program this year?
I'm sorry, relocating what?
The geese.
Oh, geese. Sorry, I I thought you said deets. I wasn't sure what that was. I I don't know, is my answer. I I actually asked that question myself with our resident lake expert, Todd Peaway, who was a was a biologist before he became a human resource specialist. He managed the program last last time we had it, which was pre COVID. And we don't have, at least not yet, at least definite information as to whether the programs are go or isn't. If it is a go, then we'll certainly participate as we've done in the past.
Yeah, as soon as we can get the answer to that question, it would be really appreciated because last year, when we didn't have the program, it was just a terrible mess.
Oh, I know. And and we didn't have it not because we didn't want it.
No, I know.
Yeah, the state didn't have it.
I know. But there are folks asking already, so.
I've got something to share. This Thursday is Earth Day. And on Saturday, the Cadillac Earth Day Committee is planning an Earth Day event that is a drive through Earth Day event. We are putting together packages that you'll drive through and will hand you a bag. Meyer has donated a hundred and fifty reusable bags. And we've gotten trees for planting with Arbor Day coming up. You can get free tree to plant. In the packages, there will be activities. There will be activities for families, for children. Some seed bombs full of wildflowers to toss out and grow more wildflowers and some other ideas and activities for you to do to be earth friendly as the spring approaches. So the it's on this Saturday, the twenty fourth from one to three P M. And it will take place at the junior high drive up. You know how the junior high parking lot where you drive in will be set up right in front of the the school doors and all you have to do is drive up. Will be masked, distance, hands free, almost hands free. We'll hand you a bag with the goodies and you can drive off and celebrate Earth Day with your bag of goodies. So last year, we weren't able to do anything for Earth Day. And this year, we decided that we would, since we learned how to exist in a time of pandemic, we were able to adapt and do this. So come pick up your tree and put the kids in the car. I think there's some frisbees in the bags and some other fun things. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Just wanted to mention Mayor, just wanted to mention really quickly that the online notice for the historic district commission has already been updated. So we're good to go.
Great. Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Is my sign fixed right here?